Sure.
Good evening and welcome, everybody, to the Planning Board meeting for June 13th, 2017. I'd like to inform the audience that we are being audio and videotaped per open meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts. We do not have any public hearings tonight, per se. We have three discussions on different statuses of subdivisions. But first thing on the agenda, we have a -- do you folks read this? Yeah. We have a request for withdrawal without prejudice for a site plan application for 194 Main Street. Anybody know the reasons why?
We do not.
No reasons why?
No reasons why.
Anybody have any against -- no. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I figured you might know, John, what was going on.
No, I don't.
Al didn't come in?
Just sent an email this morning.
First up, I think we have the folks here from Stop &amp; Shop, Liberty Lane Project. Who's representing you tonight, guys? Would you please use the microphone, not for the people in the room, but for those at home who will be watching this later or today if it's simulcast? Just make sure the green light is on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are here to seek approval of an agreement between Stop &amp; Shop Supermarket Company and the town of Norfolk in respect of the certain work to be done to Liberty Lane and its subsequent acceptance. I believe that this has all been distributed to you. You've seen the agreement, the list of work, and the expense calculations. Money is in escrow. It's been approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, well, the fuck happens?
And the remaining approval is for the Planning Board.
When was the takeoff done on the cost to complete?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
When was the takeoff done on the cost to complete?
Within the last two months, was it?
Even more, six months ago.
Six months. You reviewed this, Bob?
I did. Those are my numbers.
Are you confident that in the last six months, the prices to complete that have remained similar?
Yes, I am. Just as a little bit of a background, our town attorney is here, David DeLuker. David, going between us and Stop &amp; Shop. The numbers that you see on Exhibit A, I think you'll see, are my numbers. And just not so you're confused, the back pages were numbers that were estimated by Coastal Construction, which is part of my estimate. So really, all you need to see is Exhibit A and the final cost that we came up with is $151,624. And I've gone over with these numbers back and forth, and we're happy with them.
And there is a substantial contingency. Is it 25%?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah, there's 20% contingency, but that also means that with that number, we have to see oversight of the construction, which we normally wouldn't do. So I think the board normally asks for 25% for your information.
Are you going to continue, Bob, with the walks, even though I know that in the agreement it called for this brick-paved crosswalk? Are you going to continue with the cobblestone walks to tie into the rest of the town?
With that, I'd like to converse maybe with you if we agree in these numbers, and we do, that the timing of that may be after the development, perhaps, of the Stop &amp; Shop if it ever happens, or before. But yes, I will be pursuing that.
So this is all basically miscellaneous repair work?
It is.
Right. The other question is, I talked to our town council during the afternoon in Hathaway. Are you confident you can get all of these things completed this summer? Because, as you know, the pricing going up and up, the six months being late on this cost completion makes me a little bit hesitant. But if this thing drags on, I know it's been dragging on now for five, six years. I'd like to get this settled. But would like to be confident, at least I would be, excuse me, be confident that this is going to be completed sometime during this summer or early fall, so we don't have another cost increase and we find the town shot. Because we're being asked to release a substantial bond. It was a bond in the amount of, what, $600,000 still? So releasing a $600,000 bond for a $151,000 payoff, there's a substantial decrease in the total bond that we now hold. So the last thing I want to see is to have this work end up costing us an extra percentage of money when we have the money here in the bond to start with.
I believe the answer to your question would be, my goal would be to get it before the winter comes. But as you know, right now, it's New England, and we have our own work to oversee, and I have some priorities to this. But most of this work here is, like you said, cosmetic. I don't want to put trees in the ground right now. I'd like to wait for the fall. Any kind of construction work, I'd probably like to do when we've exhausted our chapter 90 funds and the work we have scheduled for this town.
And you're doing the work, the DPW?
Will be overseeing the work out here.
You're going to oversee it, or you guys are going to do it?
We're going to do part of it, and we're going to use our contracts to complete the rest of it. But all that's fit into these numbers pretty good.
Okay. Dave, while you're here, I don't want to waste your time. You got something to say? Most attorneys do.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, first of all, recognize the hard work that Mr. McGee and his office and the town administrator's office put into this matter. It has been not just the effort with respect to the work that concerns the bond, but we also were dealing at the same time with the wastewater treatment plan, resolve that aspect of this case. And I think that what you have before you is a reasonable proposal. The important aspect of it, that we foresee the work getting done and getting done expeditiously within the budget amount that has been provided here. And I think, you know, the idea of having a bond is certainly necessary in all of the cases that we have. But in this instance, it's now been translated into real expenses to be completed in a real timeframe. So I think on behalf of the town, I do support the request that's been made by way of this agreement.
Which of the several Stop &amp; Shop entities are we dealing with? We've got our hole, we've got Stop &amp; Shop, we've got Eastern Development. Which of those are we dealing with here?
I may --
The supermarket company. The Stop &amp; Shop Supermarket Company, which is the main -- I'm sorry. Which is the main operating entity of the Stop &amp; Shop.
Are you representing the Stop &amp; Shop?
I am.
Do you have any idea what they're going to do with their five-acre parcel that they've been sitting on for 12 years?
I do not.
Any way you can find that out for us?
We could certainly ask.
Could you find out?
I don't know, but my understanding is that there are no current plans at this time.
Is it still for sale?
That --
Right.
Are you asking me about the five acres that are owned by Eastern, by the Eastern entity?
Yes.
That's not owned by Stop &amp; Shop. The five acres are owned by the Eastern entity, not by Stop &amp; Shop.
But Stop &amp; Shop has exclusive rights on it, correct?
We have a ground lease.
That's pretty exclusive.
But we do not have the property for sale.
Oh, because there was a for-sale sign just that blew down there about a month ago.
That would not be Stop &amp; Shop's sign.
Really?
I do not believe that Stop &amp; Shop does not own the fee and does not have it for sale.
Remember that broker that came in, marketing that, Ray, who she was representing? Who'd she say she was representing?
I believe it was Eastern Development.
Eastern Development?
Which I was led to believe that that was Stop &amp; Shop.
Eastern Development is not a Stop &amp; Shop entity. It is not related to Stop &amp; Shop.
Right, we understand that.
It's a third-party arrangement.
Okay. Questions in the board? Michelle?
Yeah.
You around here for this way back when, right?
I do have a few questions. I'm just curious, I know that the plowing costs are supposed to be included, the $6,000 and change, in addition to the $151,000. So is it truly more of a $158,000, $159,000?
It's not in this cost calculation here, so for all the outstanding invoices for snow plowing, that's separate from this.
But it's in the agreement that both are going to be reimbursed. But I only, so is it the total truly closer to $158,000, $159,000?
I believe that is correct insofar as adding in the snow plowing. We did invoice that separately, and it was going to be paid outside of, not part of, the construction costs.
But the whole deal's happening together?
Yes.
Yeah, so it just says, you know, Stop &amp; Shop will pay the town the total amount of the construction costs and the plowing costs collectively called the payment. I just want to make sure legally, the payment isn't one payment and that it can be two separate payments reflecting both of those items. Yep. And then I do wonder, you know, it does say in the agreement that the town will execute the work. What's the word that's used? Quickly or expeditiously or something like that. So I do wonder if, Bob, you can't get to the work right now. I wonder if it makes sense to add a line item for potential escalation, if in fact this stuff goes beyond. So I already see Coastal's number is actually already a year old, and we're seeing escalation go up 6% to 10% in the market right now. So great if this could get done in the next few months, but if not, you know, I do wonder if in addition to the contingency, if the work can be done by a certain date, we also fold in a potential escalation factor to cover for market costs. Just an idea. And then my last question is, I see that these are your direct costs, your labor and your material, but are there any indirect costs? Like, do you have any concrete testing you're going to have to do, or any project management fees someone's going to overlook the work? Any soft costs that, again, you might want to add into the values here?
No. Michelle, we've, these numbers are pretty solid.
Okay.
I mean, if you look at it and you, like, the cost number one for $48,300 for the concrete roof pavers, flush edging and stuff, we have that already in stock, but we're going to go back with cobblestones. So we know that the extra cost is going to come from us, and those cobblestones, I've been putting cobblestones in the center of town, so I know the number's there, so that's not a consideration.
Yep.
The trees are going to go in this year. I don't see that going anywhere. I put a little extra before we even had the contingency. I know what you're getting at, and I think it's great for escalation. If I wanted to get here for another three years, I'd agree with you.
Yeah.
But I'm feeling pretty good that I'd hate to see this crumble for so small a money.
No, and I'm not looking to crumble. I'm just looking to put you in the best position to succeed as well.
Thank you, yep.
You know? Because like you said, you don't want to be caught behind the eight ball and then not be able to do the work either. So it's just making sure you've, you know, built in, for a little bit of money that we've sort of, you know, buttressed yourself best you can.
I can tell you this, that, for instance, we've fit in here and had agreed to have all the trees replaced at a certain number, and that was a decision made over the winter time when all trees looked dead. But if we go out there right now, some of these trees look like they're making a come-down. But still, the number's there, and I don't think anybody's going to subtract that out. But there are some little cost savings that we could appreciate here as well with this price.
In terms of getting it done, I found the word, it's that we're promptly completed. Is there any obligation promptly of a timeframe? We have to get the work done? I'm looking at David, because I don't know if that has any legal implications.
Yeah, it really is, I don't think there's any legal significance to that. It's like saying reasonable.
I like that word better.
And I think, as I understand from Mr. McGee, based on his thought process and scheduling that, I think it comports with the notion of prompt.
Okay.
Kevin, any questions?
Just about time, but those are answered.
And Jack, I see you signed this in advance.
As I said, this has been a process, and yes, the town administrator's been involved from the beginning on this, and yeah, he has agreed to the terms that we had set out here. He's already signed it.
I guess there's nothing to vote on, then.
So I guess if you folks approve, we're going to be settling the bond in the name of Stop &amp; Shop in the amount of $635,000 to be settled for amount. If I can find the number.
I'm serious, honestly, where there's a legal contract that's been signed and executed, I don't know that there's anything for us to vote on. It already talks about releasing the bond.
It has been made clear from the outset that this is a call to be made by the Planning Board. Mr. Hathaway's signature on this agreement is not binding the Planning Board in any way.
This is a site plan, and this is a bond that the Planning Board established well before, I think, all of us were here. So technically, we're the final sign-off from what I understand, so.
You would need a motion from the Planning Board to release the bond.
Well, we ought to have a motion to approve this first. Well, I think we can probably combine this in a compound motion to release the bond in the amount of $635,000.
How about I take a stab at this?
Go ahead. You've got the amounts here, Michelle.
Yeah, so I move that we release the Stop &amp; Shop bond of $635,000 in exchange for the agreed-upon collective payment of construction costs and plowing costs remaining to finish the outstanding items from the site plan approval development.
That works. Second?
Second.
Let's get a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then we're settled with that, then we'll sign that off. Thank you. You're welcome. Have a good night. Do you have the document for us to sign now, or?
Once. It's in here.
It is.
Would you like us to sign that now or later?
Sign after the A plus.
So the references to the construction costs and plowing.
It would have been nice to get this thing ahead of time to read.
Yeah.
I'd agree with him as you. Jesus. All right, next we have the bond discussion for Fern Ridge Estates. Lou, how have?
Good.
Just, if you can tell us again, Lou, your name for the record.
Lou Petrosi with Wall Street Development Corp.
So as I recall, the last time you were here, perhaps last fall?
Been a long time.
Yeah. We had reached an impasse, because you were looking for, what, $36,000 to $40,000?
Somewhere in that vicinity, yes.
All right. And I think, I actually remember myself speaking in favor of that, and then the curve I was thrown at the end is we had talked about getting the plowing bill paved and putting money into the town's inspection account so we could continue to inspect your project for the duration of it.
I never saw anything in writing. I do recall conversations that I've --
All right, but right of now, the plow bill, I understand, is paid.
Maybe, yeah.
All right, so we'll have to hold off until we find, can you tell us, Betsy?
I don't know.
All right. I was told by, was it you, that the plowing bill was paid?
I received an email from the DPW department that the plow bill has been paid and is up to date.
Very good. Mr. McGee's here, we can confirm. Yep. All right. Is there money in the reserve account?
There is not.
What is the reserve account?
The reserve account is money put in by developers or applicants to pay for the inspection from the town's outside consultants. You've had a bunch of that over the years on this project.
Observation.
Observation, yeah. So we do need something in that, and I think the last impasse we had was you had some of the sidewalks done that weren't inspected. Is that correct, Bob? But I think that everybody's comfortable that the physical construction of those is solid. Okay. But again, so we can get around that, we'd like to have money in the account as everybody's required so that we can continue on and we continue inspecting.
Okay.
So you're willing to do that?
I don't know what the amount, what are you asking for?
It's $1,000, yeah.
Is it $1,000?
Yeah, it was $1,000.
$1,000.
And who would be doing the review? There aren't that many inspections left to be done, really, just paving and grass strip and --
As-built review.
As-built.
Trees.
Trees, yeah.
Right. I understand.
You don't do an inspection of the asphalt when you --
Right, yeah, we have engineers inspect the asphalt to match it up to the bill plans. We do. Always have, actually, and I think they have a standard fee, too. But anyways, that's really not relevant, because you're going to have a copy of the bill that's done for each inspection with a detail on what it's about.
Right, and if it's not all used, it gets returned.
It gets refunded, correct, correct.
I understand.
All right.
The last time when I spent money on inspection and it wasn't really used to disrepair.
Well, I don't want to go history I'm not familiar with. I'm moving forward here.
Okay.
So moving forward, we're going to get $1,000 into the inspection account so we can continue to inspect.
Okay.
All right. Okay, very good. The other thing that come up is you have an open space special permit, and one of the requirements of the open space special permit is each lot is released, there's a $2,000 fee due to the town. So as of now, how many lots have been released?
All 13 have been.
All 13. So basically, right now, there's $26,000 due to the town in areas for the open space permit.
I'm not aware of that.
Would you like a copy of your decision?
Nope.
You wouldn't? All right, so those funds have to be put into the town's coffers also.
I'll have to review with my attorney.
Very good, okay, you can do that. So once those two items are covered and paid, last meeting, I, and we went over this, and Bob did review the bond account, in my opinion, the bond account is high, there should be money released. That's why I was kind of discouraged when we couldn't get money into the review account or the plowing bill paid at that time. All right, we have a street tree plant right now. I know some of the neighbors concerned with street trees. We had a request from Mr. Petrosi perhaps a year and a half ago that he did not want to put the street trees by town regulations 35 feet apart. He wanted them 45 feet apart. We have some utility wiring in grass strips where street trees cannot go. So we asked Mr. Petrosi to talk with the neighbors and see which ones would like, which ones would like trees in their front yard as compared of the grass strip. Yes. And you come up with a plan now that --
We did come up with a plan, yes. I worked with the neighbors, I got responses, I think, from all of the neighbors as to what they would like to have. We did come up with a plan. The Planning Board at that time approves going forward with the plan, but it never got, nothing had done.
Excuse me for a second. I think you find my Tourette's syndrome symptoms kind of funny. If it really is, if it's making you laugh that hysterically, maybe you should just leave. You sure? Would you like to?
Missed place.
Pardon me?
Missed place.
Hmm? What did you say?
You're misplaced.
Very good, we'll move on. So, go ahead, Ray.
So, yeah, we did come up with a plan. I worked with the neighbors, I got responses back from, I believe, all of the neighbors, and we had a plan that was, that seemed acceptable at that time. We, I brought that to the Planning Board. The Planning Board allowed me to move forward with the planting, but we did reach that impasse where we never got anything planted.
So what's your schedule now for the trees, Lou?
I don't have any schedule right now.
All right, okay. Do the board see the rest of that tree plan, that sort of, I don't think we agree on it, but Ray went over it with us.
The tree plan that Ray and the neighbors and whatever put together roughly made sense, and some neighbors didn't want any trees, and anyway, they cut the number of trees roughly in half, maybe even a little more than half, as I recall.
That's it.
And the difference in trees go into a town tree bank to be used in different parts of the town where needed.
I did see some correspondence, Betsy, just today, from a neighbor who may be here, feeling that that was an unfair decision and the trees should be used elsewhere. By our knowledge, the last place we left this out, just for everyone to understand, was the plan that the neighbors had agreed upon and Mr. Petrosi had agreed upon and we had agreed upon, and we agreed that the excess would go into the tree farm. So if there's other thoughts, it's just new to us?
If the neighbors would like more trees?
I didn't agree with it.
To this plan, you never agreed to it?
Well, the plan was fine, but I didn't agree that the excess would go to the town.
That's the town, right.
Well, I don't know that that's your decision to make. You owe the trees you owe, and you put in what you put in, and then the rest can be decided by the town.
Maybe so, but if the trees are going to get planted, they're planted in the subdivision somewhere.
Well, that's great. So what you should do, like we had said before a year ago, find a place that's acceptable, because some of them are going to have to go on private property. Part of this plan incorporated the different spots in the private property where the trees were going. The neighbors, I'm assuming you approached them and said which ones want which in front yards, right? That was taken care of. All right, that being said, if you have, I think you're delinquent by what, 50 trees that don't work?
Approximately 50, yeah.
If you can find a spot in your subdivision for 50 more trees that's acceptable to the people in the private property, we'd be happy to put them in. And at the same time, the detention basin is missing a number of trees, mostly conifer trees, that are about 54 or so. So that detention basin right now has to be brought up to code, which will be shown on your ASBIL when you do it, showing the trees that are on your subdivision plan. And everything is pretty neatly specified there, the type of tree, the height of tree, et cetera. So that's pretty, and the detention basin should cause no concern as far as any utilities or structures, they should be put in ratably, so hopefully you can get that done soon.
Won't be any planting done between June, July, and August.
I understand, yeah, I do. I'm hoping you line up with the suppliers to get a bunch in stock so that when the time comes, it'll be delivered, so you can get them in, we could be done with this, I'm hoping.
I'll do my best.
All right, very good. If you, we had a couple of other issues with the location, the height of the sidewalks, Lou, and things like that. We took a brief look at your ASBIL plan. Your ASBIL plan shows the location of the roadway. It doesn't show any sidewalk location, or does it show elevation? So if you just brought that along a couple of steps, showed us the elevations of the roadway, we saw that one radius there is off six or seven feet, the sidewalk, the road, the grass strip, but if you could just get us the ASBIL up to that date, the board can make a decision on what things they want changed, what things are acceptable. So by the time you go to put your finished code on, everything that's been agreed on is in place. And I think that just as a matter of, you didn't note the infrastructure, as you know, that we got to take an ASBIL of the drainage, the infrastructure, and elevation, so if you could just get us to that.
They wouldn't do the infrastructure or the drainage because it's paved over. You probably know those.
We have the drainage all cambered and ASBIL.
Right, so how would you do an ASBIL?
I'm afraid of our DPW and what we require to do that, okay? But if you can get us the elevations of the sidewalk, especially when in question, we can look at that and the amount of the finished paving and see what's needed to be done to bring that. Then we can determine whether the elevation is too steep to cut or whether it's okay. You know, I've been doing this, I know with other members, but everything doesn't come out exactly right in the subdivision. You do the things as best you can, and you try to make it so it's acceptable and it works. I think the key thing is it works. As far as the drainage goes, if you folks go out there after a heavy rainstorm and you see water funneling all down the catch basin, you don't see standing piles, then it probably works. If you see standing piles, that means you're going to have a problem with your asphalt five years down the road, because as the water sits there, it's going to permeate through the ASBIL and call it all to heave up. So I think at this stage, you guys probably know whether that works or not. So right now, and I'll open up to the board in a second, I think probably the ball's in your court, Lou, if you can get the funding for the --
Inspection.
Inspection account. If you can check, get a copy of our permit for the open space fees with Betsy and get that up to date, we can move forward, we can meet again and bring the bond into a more accurate amount. That being said, Michelle, questions?
Um, I think you've covered all the items.
Let's see.
I missed.
Let's see, I'll move you a second.
No, I don't think I have anything.
Okay.
No other questions?
Anybody else in the board, questions?
Yeah, just the question about updating the as-built. Are you willing to do that?
It's never been asked before, so I will have to talk to my engineers about it.
Just makes sense to check every up before you put the finished coat on.
I'll discuss it with my engineers.
All right, very good. We have neighbors here. Any questions from the neighborhood?
I have...
Just gotta, like, just tell us your name, okay?
Please. Not for us in the room, but for those at home.
Hi, Larry Patrone to Spencer Lane. I was the first buyer in this development, so I've been there closing on five years now. One of the concerns we have among the neighbors and others may talk about this is that we realize there's back and forth between you and Lou around the bond and what's released and what's not. Our primary concern right now is to get that finished coat on the roads. We've been looking at this now for quite a while, and if we were, any one of us were to sell our house, this impacts the value on our house. So my question to the board, to the planning board is, what can be done to cross this issue of money back to Lou so that he can proceed with the roads?
You just heard us. All he has to do is come up with the basic minimums that everybody else is required to do. The two thousand dollars, the inspection fee is needed, required by everybody. We asked this last fall. If you YouTube the meeting from last fall, you'll see a discussion about having that money released, and then we find out there's no inspection money or bill paid. As far as the paving of the road, nobody wants it more than we do, sir. But that's why we hold the bond that's, in our opinion, well enough to cover that easily. And we can do so much, and the rest is in the, in the hands of Mr. Petrosi. So as ratably as he moves along, we'll move along the same way. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am. Just get a microphone in.
So this is really truly a question. I truly don't know the answer. My name is Carissa Whitbread. I'm worth, I live in Fernridge. Where we fall short about, I think you said approximately fifty trees, and if we can find a place for them in the neighborhood, then that's wonderful. And, you know, we'll come as a, together as neighbors and see if we can find a place for some more trees. So say we find a place for twenty, but that's about it. That's all we can fit with neighbors not wanting some on some properties and utility lines, et cetera. Theoretically, and maybe this is a question for Lou, theoretically, right, there's some lump sum of money that's been put into this budget for trees by both the town and by Lou. If we're short by thirty trees, instead of giving back to the town when as a neighborhood we've suffered for three, four, or five years with all of this nonsense, why couldn't we get slightly larger trees instead of a small caliper tree, a larger, maybe more mature tree that if it had actually got planted when it was supposed to two or three or four years ago would look like a nice tree? My question is, if we're getting shorted fifty trees, why can't we get a higher quality, older tree instead?
My answer to you is, the planning board regulations require a tree with a caliber of two and a half to three inches. Lou has approached us to ask for a caliber of two, two and a half inches. The reason the town set regulations of two and a half to three inches and two and a half to three and two to two and a half is a substantial difference in the tree. It could be eight feet more. The reason we don't start to get trees bigger than that is because the bigger the caliber of the tree, the more propensity is when you transplant it to die. So we found out that that certain tree, planted properly, has the best chance to succeed. So for planning board regulations, we require the trees to be living for one year before we release bond money for that reason. And we found that, you know, some folks that build homes, whatever, decide they wanna get these huge specimen trees. And you should be know that the risk is that they just have a bigger chance to fail because you're transplanting on itself.
Okay. That answers my question.
So you'd like to say do bigger and better, but the trees that are spec'd for your detention basin, they're pretty super. They're eight-foot Norway firs, assorted conifers. So there's a nice selection that was on the plan that was approved. And as I said, there's like fifty-four of them, which is kind of an eyesore as you come in that open space. So there's no reason why they really couldn't be filled up right away and taken care of.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Yes, Bob?
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a suggestion. Haven't inspected this subdivision since the beginning. I can pretty much confirm, and I have the documentation along with my inspection reports, that the infrastructure is in place. The condition of the infrastructure may be in question when you talk about backfill and maybe something like that, but I feel certain that it's good enough that, to the point where maybe we could flush, televise the lines and with, even without the as-built, I can take the drawings and determine the elevation of the sidewalks if they're in question. These are simple things to do, and these are things that can be done, like, right away. And I would put my hand up in the air to help along this. Is there any chance we could pave the street with the monolithic berm and do the planting later so these people can have a loom board or some grass because they have been living like this for quite some time? I'm sure with an expectation when they built the house that it had been done by now, but not that that's my argument.
Yeah, yeah. We still have to follow the proper procedure that area subdivision goes through. My question on the trees is maybe Lou can answer this. Normally, when you're putting in trees that size, you're using a machine?
Oh, you would have to.
Right. Do you think it's better to get the trees in there before you start churning corners with a backhoe machine, bringing trees in and digging it with pavement?
We haven't done it that way.
Would you consider it?
Trees go in last.
Well, you just take the chance that if you injure the road, then it's gonna be repaired, that's all.
All right.
All right. But no, I, you know, I know Mr. Petrosi, and I know he does a decent job. And again, it's all a matter of just processing. You know, we can only do half the job here, and he has to comply with the rest of it. So the as-built has to be done either way. The as-built is an add-on thing, so he's not wasting any money by doing part of the as-built now and then in the end. As a matter of fact, the planning board has talked about there should be no reason why as-built shouldn't be done during the base paving stage and infrastructure stage. Because if you're gonna find a problem, why do you wanna find a problem when the finished coat is on and now it's a nightmare fix? So really, when I ask him to continue on with his as-belt and do the grass strip and the sidewalks and the elevations, it's simply no extra cost to him. It's just one more step. We can confirm all of these things that are out there that the engineer or the planner brought up, that's all. And I think he understands that.
Lastly, and I won't, just my last pitch for this, to get the street done first, and I've, I heard you loud and clear. History of the subdivision shows that I have no faith that these trees are gonna go in like you think they're gonna go in, and we might be sitting here next year again discussing the same problem. And I'm talking five years of experience with this subdivision.
For, for...
To consider, if you have it in you to change your mind, I'm sure we can put that street, the berm, the loom border, and do the trees last with a rubber excavator. And because the trees aren't going in at the number that they were approved at, it's probably because utilities underground were in the place of where the root ball should be. So as far as the amount of trees should go, I think they belong to the town. And I know, for instance, that places on Spencer Road who are waiting for the top coat on Spencer Road, who have nothing to do with the subdivision, have been waiting for years for that street to get paved. Just something for consideration if you can change your mind on that.
It's close to being done, right? The town always has the option, if this thing continues on ad infinitum, is to pull the bond and finish the road ourselves. Right. I don't think the DPW coming in intrinsomally and doing things, especially when you just committed to fixing the downtown for stop and shop and helping out with the police building. I don't think that really, I'd wanna take the risk. Plus, it's totally out of procedure. Anybody else agree with me, or...
I thank you for your thoughts, but I agree with John.
I mean, Lou's welcome to put the final coat down if he wants.
Sure can.
But I think spending town money to do it, there's no incentive for Lou to protect your work when he's gonna put the trees in. And then if it's damaged, it's not his work to repair. So I don't think that's a...
This is a job for the developer to finish. If the developer doesn't finish or time goes on...
Not asking to do it. I mean...
Then the town has to pull in legally and take over. But hopefully, it all just works out fine, which I'm confident it will, actually.
Well, can I just say this? I appreciate the fact that you're discussing it, but my position has been all along is that if, unless the planning board releases the monies that we've requested for the work that's been completed, we cannot proceed any further to spend more money and not be reimbursed or released from the bond. So we're then happy to look into all of these issues, but quite frankly, we need a bond. We need a planning board to release the money that we've requested.
I'm gonna say it again. I said it twenty minutes ago. I said it six months ago. We're happy to do that. Call up the YouTube video. I talked about releasing it. You gotta pay your basic fees. You have money in the inspection account like everybody else, and you gotta pay the fees to the open space that are due. Then you can come right back here. I told you the bond is, to me, overstated, and get your money and then move forward.
That could happen as soon as next month.
Well, I'll check into the fees that we think that are due to the town.
We have the special permit right here, so it's none of all open space.
When were those fees supposed to be collected?
When the lots were released.
How long ago was that?
A while ago.
Well, they weren't collected.
Correct. You look into it.
I would say that there's an issue there.
Fine. Well, you could look into that and let us know. Anybody else have questions?
I just have one.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I know right now we just sound like a bunch of complainers. And I know that right to you, it's just trees and asphalt and sidewalks and a strip of grass. But to us, it's our houses constantly being pounded by the sun and by the wind. It's dirt where grass should be that whips up and makes a mess of our cars and our yards and our kids' toys. It's no privacy. It's ugly. It's a fishbowl. It's living in a hot, windy, cold fishbowl. It's dusty. In the winter, the wind gusts shake the house. In the summer, the sun beats on the houses. It is affecting our quality of life on a day-to-day basis, and it has for years and years and years now. Lou showed me a document that he submitted to the town a year ago with his outline of, you know, this is what we can do to fix the sidewalk. This is what we can do to fix the grass. This is what we can do to fix the elevation. You just told me lots were released a long time ago.
Lots were released...
And he hasn't had the bills. If he had the bill, he would've paid the bill, and he would've got his money back tonight, and we'd be talking about trees and paving roads. I feel like there's unnecessary delay right now, and the victims in this feud are us as tax-paying neighbors. We pay, what, roughly fifteen thousand dollars each a year in real estate taxes? That is a lot of money, and I don't feel like anybody's looking out for our best interest. I feel like we're the victims in this feud, and nobody cares, and no one's doing anything. And I feel like the town, I understand you're standing firm, and I understand that there's a history here, but you have to understand, we're not just whining for the sake of whining. This affects our daily lives.
Which is why that Ray and I, and our engineer at our cost, went out there a year ago and then met with Lou two, three, maybe four times. With a plan we thought was gonna be planted on spring. That's why we did that in the previous fall, to get the trees planted, to get the grass strips done, to get the detention basin finished. We can only do so much, though.
And he said, great, I'd love to do it, but I need some of my bond back. And you should've said, okay, in order to get your bond back, you need to pay your inspection and your as-belt.
We did. We did. And it's in the meeting minutes, and it's on the meeting. We've said this to Lou for a long time.
So Lou, what's your take, please?
I wasn't at that meeting, so I have no idea what they're talking about. But I did receive a phone call, and I did object to the method of being held up for monies that in the past the town has not spent wisely. So that's...
Lou, yeah, Lou wanted us to cut back on sanding your roadways because he thought the town sanded them too much. So basically, it's a requirement of the developer to keep roads safe. So if everybody else in this town was having the roads sanded, he wanted yours to be sanded less. That was the request.
That's not true, John. Let's not...
You said you were paying too much for sanding. They came out too much. And I told you, they come out when every other road is done. It's very...
Totally unrelated to what we're talking about.
We have multiple emails. We've sent Lou with these conditions, even if he wasn't, claims he wasn't at the meeting with the conditions of what it would take to release the bond. He's been notified in writing. It's simple. It's a small amount of fee compared to the bond release he's asking for.
Take the same action, take the same action tonight, then. Release the bond. I'll bring a thousand dollars in for your inspection fees.
Or could there be a compromise? Like, perhaps you could release twenty thousand dollars of the bond instead of forty thousand dollars, and then, you know, by next month, he has your inspection and your as-belt to you?
We're replacing, we're replacing everything that he requested as long as he pays the monies that everybody else pays.
We could trade the value that you owe, perhaps, in fees and lot release fees and reduce the bond by that much owed, perhaps, and we hold that contingent upon getting the check, and then we can perhaps release the rest of it once we get those checks. That might be a way to compromise. Right? So it's twenty-seven thousand?
We have an open space plan. The developer, the benefit of an open space plan is you don't have to put in as much roadway, which is a substantial savings. You get an extra lot. So we figure that for thirteen lots with way less roadway and an extra lot, two thousand per lot, twenty-six thousand for the whole subdivision, we thought, I've been doing this for years now before I was on here, is a very fair way to do it. And, I mean, these are the papers, these are recorded documents that they registry. I mean, it's their obligation, the developer, to come pay the fees that he's due. But a lot of these things have been going back and forth for a long time now. And due respect for you, I, you know, I understand exactly what you're talking about, right? I've been in neighborhoods that are unfinished, and you don't know everything that's going on communication-wise between the board, the planner, and Lou. And like I said, I think...
But it's been non-productive, because here we are five years later.
Exactly. It has been non-productive, yes. So we're trying to get that in the simplest terms to move forward.
But what about what Michelle just suggested?
So he's asking for a reduction of thirty-six thousand, nine thirty-eight. If we took the twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, sorry, owed in fees, it would be a reduction of nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight. I think as a board, we could likely agree to that value tonight, thus holding the fee amount as an additional in the bond. I don't know how you...
Can we release the nine?
Release the nine, nine three eight.
That's, that's not really, I'm not gonna float with that.
This is what we come, this is what happens every single time, okay? This is what happens every single time.
Please, every single time. You cannot mix a bond with other issues that are related to...
See, we're coming into a very, very hybrid situation for something that's very simple that everybody does. Pay your fee, pay your fee.
Should've collected when you released the lots.
But pending the verification of those two items that John mentioned, do you object to them if they're...
Which two items?
The thousand dollars for the inspection fee and the twenty-six thousand dollars for...
I think the twenty-six thousand dollars is in question.
Okay.
Check that out and get back to us, because once you pay it, we can release the bond and you can, and then you will see when we release this next forty thousand bond, you can then witness yourself how much gets done. Okay?
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry to belabor this issue, but my sense is that Lou is not gonna pay for that fee. And I understand your position as the planning board. You have certain things you have to uphold. You hold other developers' feats of fire and certain things. But with regard to this issue, we're still at impasse. And I see Chris's frustration with this, and I'm incredibly frustrated with it. And those roads will be in the same shape six months from now that they're in right now. Gravel erosion, terrible.
The end of our driveways are crumbling. We're all, we're gonna all have to redo our driveways because every time the plows come, at the end of our driveway, it smashes up against the end of our driveway. And I tried to have the topco company come out, and they said, don't bother until the road's finished.
When he puts the road in, his process is what's required. He has to cut back your driveway so it's exactly clean cut and pave up to that so there's a smooth transition. That's his job, is finishing the road. So you shouldn't have anybody bother to fix it in the meantime.
Right. No, we can't fix our own driveways. We can't make our driveways look nice because the road doesn't look nice.
I think we are, we are very sympathetic to your position. And as we stated earlier, if this impasse continues, we have the option of pulling the bond and getting the work done through subcontractors ourselves.
Could we put a time limit on that, please? Is that possible?
Yeah, there was a statement made earlier about hoping that we come to a resolution. I mean, I think, you know, from my perspective...
Sir, I'm sorry. Just the microphone, not for us, but for those at home.
Hope is a nice concept, but it's not a solution here. And I sympathize with some of the neighbors that have been there for five-plus years. We haven't even been there two yet. And I agree with everything that Mrs. Whitbread said, and I, she's very passionate about it, and I top that in my plea. But that being said, the town, I think, needs to come up with some timeline and some solution because, you know, I agree, it seems like Lou will continue to drag his feet. I would like to see Lou do it. I certainly think Lou has had the opportunity to do it, and we're not quite there yet. So I think, instead of being here in a year from now, it would be nice to have trees in our yards in a year from now.
Well, like I said, if he pays his basic fees and we release the money, see what he does next.
So can I ask you one question about the money? See, the bond, what's the total bond that you guys have?
Hundred and forty-two thousand.
Yeah, about a hundred and forty-two thousand. Give or take a little bit, there's the exact number.
So at the end of the day, if you release his forty thousand now, at the end of the day, there's more money than what you need. If he walks out of town without paying those fees, it's covered, right?
I'm not totally sure. The ASBelt is to that next level. If he does that ASBelt to that next level, right, which we asked him to do two years ago, then we can have assurances in a lot of these things.
We think it's enough to cover his list, but we don't know if there's 27,000 extra on top of it. That's a substantial amount.
So what's the downside to releasing his 40,000, giving in? I know it's giving in. I know he's difficult. We've all bought houses from him. I built, I bought my house from him before. It had walls on the inside, so I dealt with him on everything. I know he can be difficult. I get it. But, you know, everybody just digging their heels in and saying they're not going to give in isn't getting us anywhere. So what's the downside to saying, "Okay, Lou, as a sign of good faith, and on the behalf of the people who live there, we're going to release this 40,000. Get it done."
The good faith with Lou goes back before he started. He wasn't supposed to have any lots released until he had the roadway in. He had multiple lots released. He got a waiver on the where he's supposed to build. He got a waiver on the detention basin. He has been getting waivers for the whole duration of the project. It gets to the point, we'd like to work with him and get it done, because if we do pull the bond, it's time.
So he says you can't pull the bond unless he goes out of business.
Well, he can say whatever he wants. We've actually had legal advice on it. So the reason you don't want to do that is because he could contest the pulling of the bond, and it takes time.
He already said he'd have us tied up in litigation for years.
Right, right, yeah. That's his style.
It's not, pulling the bond doesn't seem like it's a timely, not expeditious solution.
And that's, and that's why I've been trying to work around that. That's exactly why.
And so the danger, the real danger in us giving in, as you mentioned, it just sort of, you know, we'll take a leap of faith here, is the precedent that it sets. We have developers that come in front of us every single meeting, and if we start waiving the requirements that we vote for in our decisions for them to pay these fees, guess what? We've set a very dangerous precedent that every other developer can say, "Well, you did it for him. You got to do it for me." So unfortunately, there's some precedent-setting legal issues here that...
So what does it take to just be done with them? I mean, what's it worth to get it moving forward and be done with them? Because this round and round and round isn't good for anybody.
We should find out within the next month whether he'll put the $1,000 in the inspection fee, inspection account, and whether he'll pay the $26,000 in open space fees.
My sense is that $26,000 is not going to pay. You saw him right there. He was sitting there, and he responded.
Could I just say, I'm Matt Sylvester from 11 Winston Road.
Yep.
In looking at it, it strikes me that economically, it's not worth it for him to continue, and he has no intention of ever building again in the town. So he has no upside by continuing. Could the town pave the road at the town's expense and then contest the entire bond and take it?
Now, that's up to the town administrator, but we have so many roads now that are legitimately in and in disrepair that haven't been done. I don't know if the town's going to spend money to kill any of those. He does have a, he does have a drag from not walking away, and the drag is the bond is substantially more.
But he may have written off the entire 142,000? He may have written it off at this point entirely.
I don't think he has. He told me he thinks he can finish the project for 75 grand.
Yeah, that's probably accurate.
So I think it's worth it to him to ground. I just...
Without a doubt.
I just don't know, the 26,000 seem like news to him. I don't know how $26,000 can be used to build it.
It's not news to him. Believe me, it is not news to him.
It's a signed document that's recorded at the registry of deeds as part of his approval. It's just magic.
So best-case scenario is he goes to his attorney tomorrow. The attorney says, "Yep, that 26 grand is legit. The $1,000 for the inspection is, the inspection account is legit, and then the ASBelt is the third request we have in right now, too."
We could release money before the ASBelt.
There's two things. There's the two things. The 1,000 for that inspection account and the 26 for the lots.
And Betsy, have we actually, and do we invoice him for these things, so that he actually sees that we've charged him? Have we invoiced him for the 26,000?
The open space 2,000?
Can we? Because he claims we haven't collected it, so can we send him a collection note? I understand. I understand. But I just wonder, is another step in sort of the legal process? I, if you don't typically do it, but I'm just wondering if it...
Would expedite things, yeah.
Right.
Anything that could help. Any little gesture that might be able to help.
Sorry, just one last thing. So Ray and I have worked closely together. I'm the neighbor that put the comprehensive plan together with all the other neighbors for the trees. Lot of hours put into that, and I'm happy to do it because I love my neighbors and my neighborhood, and we want trees. He was excellent to work with. I wish him the very best of luck in his next endeavor. I think at this point, I want to be reaching out to someone on a weekly basis for some sort of weekly status report, and I want to know, with Ray going away, which is sad and a hard loss for us because he's been on our team here, who is our point of contact, contact going forward? Because that terrifies me with Ray on board if we've got nothing done, with no Lou, with no Ray replacement. I don't know who I'm working with here, what, where I go from here, what we as a neighborhood do to reach out to you as a town moving forward to make sure that the ball is rolling and progress is happening.
Well, they're interviewing for a new planner right now.
So there's nobody?
Just the administration office.
Right. Dr. Betsy. So if we get correspondence as a planning board, it typically comes through the administrative office and then gets distributed to the planning board, like emails or even if they're written documents that get scanned, it typically comes through the administrative office and then distributed to us. So we know when it comes to us as well. We're not going to probably get weekly correspondence from Lou? I would, you know, for sure at our next meeting, we'll have an update.
Who's going to be getting weekly correspondence for us? So if you can be, if you can help us help you and say, "Hey, you know, hey, it's Michelle from the town planning board. We're really close. This is all we need. If you could reach out to Lou," I will hound him. I'll go to his house. I'll, I'll put a boot on his car. I mean, honestly, I'll do whatever it takes. What, next time he comes through Fern Ridge, I'll lay down on the road so he can't drive by my house without getting out of the neighborhood. Help us help you.
One of the things we can do is, he was wishy-washy about that. About that 20, whatever it is.
$26,000 for the release of those lots? We're going to hold his feet to the fire. Are you paying it or not? Not what he just did, which was, "I don't know. I don't know what I want to do. I have to talk to my attorneys." But, you know, if we push him, are you going to pay it or you're not? My fear is he's not, but, but we need to push him on that. But if we get basically, "No, I'm not going to pay it, or I'm going to drag my feet on this," I think we have to come back to you as a planning board and say, "We suspect he's not going to pay it" until he gets his money back. And so we're at that impasse again, and so that's where we need you to make a decision at some point in the future, because I think that's a possibility. But we will hold his feet to the fire on that because we realize it's an issue.
Do you know how many conversations we've had with Lou? For some of us that are around town and the planner are outside of the neighborhood. If it wasn't a planning board and a planner, you would have one-and-a-half-inch-caliber trees. Every 50 feet around that neighborhood, nothing in your basin. They'd be left dead. You'd have nothing. This has been going on for years. And you know what? If you don't hold his feet to the fire, he'll get away with what he can. And I, I hope I'm wrong, but I think if we release the 40 grand or when we do, I think if you think you're going to see road paving or something else, I think you're probably going to be disappointed.
But dear, specific question about who to contact. Send them through Betsy, and she'll get them to us. And if we have anything, we'll send it through Betsy. She can get it to you.
Okay. Yeah, Betsy's wonderful. I know her as well. She's also been very helpful and friendly and gracious as well, so that's great to hear. Thank you.
So the chairman, an interesting point...
If she doesn't do it, we'll hound Ray in a new job.
I'll find him in Rhode Island.
We just seen call in your neighborhood three years ago.
Yeah.
You know how many calls it took to get him to fix, to make it safe?
But you're making a point.
The town went down there to do that.
You can talk about history as much as you want.
Yeah, I know.
You don't want to talk about moving forward.
That's what I've been talking about the whole media.
I don't care what happened five years ago when you decided to do business with Lou and let him into this town to build.
We don't make...
I understand.
That's not how it works.
I looked at a giant dirt pile in my cul-de-sac in the front of my house. Two young kids.
You notice, sure, the whole...
My floors of my house are ruined.
The whole conversation has been, and I say this from the first step, is moving forward with him. That's all you can do.
Well, you see, that's, you're making the point, though. The town should go after the bond at this point. This is not going to change. Next year, we'll be sitting here, and the town will say, "Okay, we're going to go forward with proceedings to take the bond."
We can talk to the town administrator, which is his call, really.
Yes.
And we can, they, everybody knows the history. We can see what they suggest. But there have been conversations with town council about pulling the bond and increasing the bond. For example, increasing the bond by the fees that he hasn't paid yet. So all of those conversations have been going on during this whole process laterally. So, like I said, you don't want to do that, because if you do, it could be time-consuming, and then you're in limbo more because there's legal action going on.
True, but if he doesn't act, a year could go by and then add the next three years on top of that as opposed to right now. He's not going to act. And we're very acutely aware of how difficult it is.
We've each bought, got into contract with him, and I was the first one. So I, I understand completely what you're talking about. I'm not privy to all the details back and forth, but I can certainly empathize with what you're talking about. What we're looking for is resolution. And my fear is this is going to go on forever, and we need the board to make some decisions if Lou decides to continue to drag his feet on certain things.
We're on the same page.
Okay.
So can I just ask you, what would be your threshold for saying, "That's it. We're going to go forward and pull the bond"? Like, do we have a timeline or where's your, where are you guys at with that? I know it's not optimal, but we have to sort of...
We can follow up with him in a week or so and find out what his thoughts are on the fees. I mean, it's not a black-and-white thing. It's a recorded document that he signed as a contingency for building. So, I mean, there's no legal interpretation to it as far as I'm concerned. So let's see what he does.
And then I think ultimately, like John has been saying, it's up to town administrations, up to Jack Hathaway and legal counsel to ultimately make that, that advice.
So can we say that if he says he's not going to pay that 26,000?
Then there's a problem.
That we'll go to the town administrator and start looking at that as, pulling the bond as an option?
Why, just theoretically, why would a person refuse, at the last meeting, refuse $40,000 in a lease to pay a $2,000 plow bill and $1,000 into an emergency fund? Why would you not want to walk away and net 37,000? What does that tell you?
That he's difficult, but that's not news. We don't know that.
But that's what we deal with.
I sympathize. I totally empathize with you on that. Absolutely.
Okay, so if we're going there, if we're taking like, all right, worst-case scenario, he won't pay the $26,000, and we have to try to pull the bond somehow, we're talking probably, what, years in court, legal action? Where does that leave Fern Ridge? Does that leave us without a road and without grass strips and without trees three years from now?
We've never had that occur. Normally, when somebody gets a bond pulled, they're bankrupt, and the town goes in and finishes it. So it's never been done with an active case with a bond in place where...
I mean, it seems like worst-case, absolute worst-case scenario. It seems like instead of delaying months here, it's, it would be years. Am I correct?
Or a year, and then...
I mean, yeah, it's, yeah.
Like I said, we thought that...
I just don't think that sounds like an, it just doesn't, right now, that speed doesn't sound like a good option.
That appears to be the only other resolution is to pull the bond, because that's where the money is to finish the job.
So if you pull the bond, do you have to wait until whatever litigation is resolved to do the work? Or if you move forward with that process, will the town do the work and then try to recoup the money with whatever legal process? Or are we held up for as long as the bond is held up?
I don't know. We haven't faced this situation before, so we don't know the answer.
Is that a triparti agreement, or is it a cash bond?
It's an insurance bond.
I mean, I just, I encourage you to drive down Winston Road, to drive down Central Road if you haven't. You know, I mean, these are, these are homes that we've worked hard in our careers and jobs and lives towards, that we spent between $500,000 and $900,000 on, that we're raising our families in, and that our day-to-day life is being negatively impacted by every single month that goes by. We're asking as taxpayers for you guys to help us and help us help you, because we want to be on your side.
Yep.
We are, we're on your team at this point. We're begging you for help, and we're begging you to allow us to help you and keep this moving as expeditiously as possible. We were trying to be patient. There was a couple of houses that had to be finished, a couple of houses that still, so... Everything's sold. It's done. The houses are built. People live in every single one of them. It's done.
Well, not quite, but...
No, I mean, like, he's done. That's what terrifies me. He's got, he, he's closed.
He still has responsibility for maintaining those roads, and Bob will tell you, if the pavement isn't down after a five-year period, the DPW has the right to make a reclaim of the whole road.
We're not a five-year period, are we?
Right. Are they, Bob? Has that pavement been down five years?
Yes.
All right. So he could make a determination that road, because of the condition of the base coat, has to be reclaimed and all redone.
I mean, the road's a nightmare.
Which is a substantial cost.
If that's a, bond is an insurance bond, do we know if he's paying the premiums?
We have a copy of the bond. I think the premiums on a bond have to be paid in advance. Let's see what happens. Let's see if he does his homework and see if we get the $1,000 for the observation fee.
And if you could reach out to him like you suggested a week from now to see whether he's a go or no-go on that top line.
We should do that.
We can do that.
Can we be on the agenda for next month?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, guys. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Brad.
Thank you. Nice working here.
You, too.
Excuse me.
Just, you know, we're actually only holding $92,000.
Not 142?
Lender's agreement. No.
All these documents say 142.
Where'd the other 50 go?
The 142 was the original bond amount.
Yeah?
And so there was a $35,000 reduction in 2012.
So this, in a letter we have from Lou on January of 2016, he quotes, "The amount is 142,387, and there's been no reduction in this amount to date." That was as of January 2016, his memo to us.
There's a Form G there.
$35,000 for the, for that, yeah, the basin liner.
And when was that released?
2012.
Huh. This letter's 2016, and quotes that he's never had any reduction.
Would you be subconscised to write a little letter to him and send him a copy of that just to remind him?
Yeah.
So then that's, so if we're only holding 90, then that's dangerously not enough to finish the work out there. Yikes.
Jeez. I wish I'd known that. Bring them all back in.
Hour ago. You all set?
The back room? I think she's...
You all set? That's it?
Okay. Here we go.
All right, we're back, and next we have a representative from Polty Homes. This is, how are you? So why don't you just bring everybody up to date on what's going on at the subdivision and your thoughts on remedies? Is that why you're here, I believe?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So as you know, we have...
Please identify myself. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. John Engdahl with Polty Homes. As you know, we have a fair amount of deficiencies in our drain line materials. So we have been researching remedies. We've met a couple of times with, with Ray and Bob. And we were pursuing a snap-tight solution. I'll give you the dumbed-down version. It's basically a plastic pipe inserted inside the concrete pipe with grout around it. At our last meeting, which was in February, I believe, we had a representative from the manufacturer and an installer. We presented it to, to Ray and Bob. It seemed like a good idea. It seemed like the most appropriate remedy that we had at the time. One of the things that was requested, that we have an engineer do volumes calculations, because the, that solution reduces the interior dimension of the pressure. And there was some question as to carrying capacity and all that. So we had our engineer do those calculations. And a majority of the pipelines will function properly. And I believe two or three weeks ago, I got an email and a phone call from Ray that said there was some, there was some question with the board and as to that method. So what we have done since then is we have enlisted the, the services of an analytical engineer who deals with these kinds of issues. He is recently on board, so I do not have a lot of information from him tonight. But expect more information fairly quickly from him. And again, with some discussions with Ray, I think our engineer and the town's consulting engineer need to discuss means and methods and come up with something that's acceptable to the town and the appropriate parties.
So name of the engineer you're contracting with?
His, his name is...
No, I just meant the company name?
Analytical Engineering Incorporated.
Oh, that's actually them, okay.
So right now, we have a majority of the cement rain... So right now, we have a, a majority of the cement drain pipes cracking and failing. Is that correct?
Correct, there are cracks, there are deficiencies, yes.
Have you taken a, the last, uh, video was taken, what, a year ago?
Uh, just under a year ago, but very close to a year ago.
What makes sense is perhaps take another one?
That is...
Witnessed by Bob or our engineer?
Yes.
And see if the, if the deterioration has continued to, uh...
Correct. That is, actually, we, again, we've, we've just recently got them onboard, Analytical Engineering.
Because the first one that was taken, there was nothing.
There was, there was very little. We did not see in the, in the first one what we saw in the second one.
Alright.
Correct.
The biggest thing, we've been through this, and the, the biggest question I have, and you know, I think before the planning board signs off on what an engineer says, the engineer's pretty much going to have to back that up with some liability, take responsibility, because, I think Michelle probably can tune in. If they're failing at that degree, we should know why they're failing.
I agree.
Rather than sticking a pipe in, if they continue to fail, right, how long is it going to take before the plastic pipe fails?
Well, again, and I excuse the layman version of this. My understanding of the snap-tight system, which is the one we were pursuing, is that is also a structural... I, I understand your, your concern. What I have, my understanding is that the host pipe, the existing pipe could, for lack of a better term, disintegrate, and this other pipe would still stay with, with the grout and the PVC.
I, I think that, I talked to Ray about this, and you guys were around, but I, I thought what, like I said, I think we should find out why it's failing before we decide to come up with a remedy, where the town people and taxpayers pay for it. I'd like to take a section of the road that shows a lot of cracking and, and, uh, structural failures. I'd like to dig it up. I'd like to dig up the, uh, the pipe, I'd like to have our engineers witness it. Alright. I'd like to look at the, uh, the status of the pipe. I'd like to look at the coverage over the pipe. I'd like to look at the banking that the pipe sits on. Alright. I'd like to look at the ring connections right on the pipe, and see if we can figure out, right, why all these things are failing. I, I think that, John, once we have, because if it's so systematic, it's going to be something during the install, unless it's an defective pipe, something in the install that when systematic is wrong throughout the whole process. I think once we find that, I'm going to let our engineer talk after I finish my layman stuff. Once we find that, I, I think we're in a better, uh, capacity to go figure out a fix.
I would agree with that, yep.
And it sounds like if you take in the whole, you take in the whole volume of drainage and changing it by making smaller pipes, it sounds like you're going to need a whole drainage study with your new, it's your new data, rather than somebody checking a few numbers. You're basically taking the, uh, the infrastructure of the drainage system and you're making it smaller. So to me, you're, you're putting in a new drainage system.
I can jump in.
You can jump in right now.
Great. Mike Zavali from Beta Group, we're acting on the board's behalf as your consulting engineer. We received the inspection reports last week, I have not had an opportunity to review them, but I do have practical experience in deteriorated pipelines and methods to rehabilitate them. I agree, Mr. Chairman, that it would be appropriate to try to do a forensic evaluation in addition to the inspection of the inside of the pipe, to evaluate the material that is outside the pipe, both the support bedding material, the backfill material that's placed on the top. We can determine some possible culprits. A lot can be gleaned from the inspection itself. You can see if you have offset joints and settlements, dips, that's an indication that you've got unsuitable support material and unsuitable compaction under the pipe. You can see if you have obvious distress or breaks in the pipe that are more than just hairline cracks that are getting worse. If you've got actual knocked-out sections, that could be backfill material, large cobbles that got tossed back into the hole on top of the pipe, shouldn't have been, and then got compacted down on top and created that deficiency. That said, I would say that the Polty is on the right track as far as the rehabilitation methodology. There are a number of different products, Snap-Tight is one product, Cure-And-Place Pipe is another method that's used, where you actually get a completely structurally independent pipe inside the original carrier pipe that, we've put them in pipes that have all but deteriorated completely. We did a Cure-And-Place Pipeline in Narragansett where it was old AC pipe, the bottom had essentially rotted away. They put in the new pipe and the Cure-And-Place Liner and point you to through a pretty heavily traveled road, completely self-sufficient, does not rely on any of the original pipe for its structural support.
Question, if, if indeed is large, as you described, large cobble, compacted, compresses, the pipe breaks it, the chunk falls into the pipe, how do you get rid of all that indurias before you try to insert the liner?
A very aggressive flushing process to remove any of the debris that's in the pipe. If you're talking about any of those Cure-And-Place Pipe, or they have Deform-Reform Pipe, which is a PVC, and it's pretty neat, they form it circular, they heat it so that they can actually fold it in on itself and keep it pliable. They put it in and then they pop it back out. Any of those processes require advanced inspection and a very thorough cleaning to remove any of those materials and obstructions. There are limitations. You can only do that when you have generally consistent profile and consistent alignment. If your pipe is all kinds of offset joints and deficiencies of that nature, it becomes a little bit problematic for, for those types of processes. But generally speaking, I think that the first desirable approach would be something trenchless that doesn't require us to go back in and re-disturb material that's already been disturbed and, and achieve some level of stability. Mr. Chairman, to your question about the capacity of the pipe, concrete pipe, the, the size of the pipe's not the only determining factor on the pipe capacity. The roughness of the pipe also plays an important role. Concrete pipe has got a rougher interior surface, and therefore, if you put in a smoother pipe, even if it's slightly smaller, and most of these are designed to be, the Snap-Tight looks like it's a little bit smaller, but Cure-And-Place Pipe fits right up against the original pipe. You actually can end up with a slightly greater hydraulic capacity because of that improvement in the roughness of the pipe. The way that we would establish that is to take the original hydraulic model for the neighborhood and revise with a smaller diameter on each pipe, but also the modified roughness coefficient, run it, and see what happens. And if you get similar results as far as flow being able to make it through for all of the design storms, then in our eyes, engineering eyes, that would be considered acceptable.
What happens if the material that was backfilled is unsuitable, which caused the cracking? So you put this plastic pipe and you've still got that unsuitable material?
It's a question of whether or not that's an ongoing process, which will be determined by looking at another round of inspection tapes, or if it was a one-time instance where they put the pipe in, they backfilled, something hit the pipe and cracked it.
Right, but something hitting the pipe...
Let's say worst-case scenario, that it's pervasive.
Something hitting a pipe would be on 70% of the line. That's a lot of somethings.
It sure is. But I've seen it, I've seen it. We're working on a project right now in Middleborough where drain lines were installed poorly. Structures were installed poorly. Backfill material that they had was a lot of broken ledge and pieces. And in that instance, we actually really didn't have the ability to line it. It was more efficient for us to go in and do a cut and cover. We did it above the original pipe, and we found a lot of stuff in the hole that never should have been back in the trench.
The problem, this is before John, so I don't want to cast any stones, but... When they started doing this road construction, what did you folks have, three different road builders? They were caught backfilling the trenches with ledge on the site that was blasted. So unfortunately, the DPW caught them, and this went on a number of times, or six, seven, 10 times. So once the DPW wasn't looking, they were backfilling these trenches again with this ledge that were on site, yeah. So, and the thing that concerns me, I mean, I don't think the DPW was there for the whole duration of laying all the road. So I start to wonder if that patent where they did it repetitively every time the town turned around, whether that was the case. And I also wonder whether the, the cement pipe was laid on the same shale, and doesn't shale turn to sand every time?
Shale can deteriorate, I'm not sure, I'm not a geologist, but...
Right, so if that, if that, if the shale deteriorated, then you would have a settling at the bottom of the pipe.
Right.
Right, because these pipes are cracking at the top and the bottom. So I think we're really going to find out, John, and a whole section of road, uh, what's causing the problem, and actually take a look at the pipe.
Well, I, I agree with you.
Right here.
Let's come up with the best reason or excuse me, why we have the failures that we have.
I think Mike just gave us a good reason, because if it's a backfill problem, I mean...
For the record, just for the record, when we first saw this, and we picked two spots in the lines that had more members than some of the others, and they were also failed in Seattle, so they began to get at it.
Is that witnessed by anybody?
Give a microphone, sorry.
Again, these were, these were kind of hand-picked sections because they were quick and easy to get at, so I do not, I'm not going to say it's representative of everything. But what we did find was proper bedding and at least, you know, a foot or so over the pipe, proper bedding material. Again, these are just too isolated, I'm not saying it was prevalent. Bob is actu- absolutely correct, our contractors did less than stellar work doing some of the installation.
That was the least invasive to the neighborhood and went along?
Well, I think there should be, there should be areas...
Looking at the video?
Looking at the video, and then determining significant areas of distress, and looking at those locations, because the evidence is there. You know there's a problem, you're going to find potentially the cause of the problem at those locations, so...
When you looked at the spots, right, did you look underneath the pipe on what it was sitting on?
Yes.
Really, you did? You're saying you didn't?
If you don't mind, all due respect, I don't think we went underneath the pipe, because I feel like...
Take the mic, Bob, take the mic, sorry.
We went out, we looked at a couple of sections. This is, um, but we, as we exposed the pipe, we didn't get over here to look underneath the pipe. When I was inspecting these, and you'll see a lot of contractors do it, I wish I could just draw her up there for you. They lay the pipe down on beds, pyramid beds of dirt, so they can get the elevation. They usually set up and put a laser through it to make sure that it's on grade. After that, they sprinkle the backfill in, they turn their shovels around, and they pound it down like that, and on both sides. I fear that that wasn't done religiously. And I also think, and I'm getting into what I think of all those, I think the handling of the pipe, like Chairman said, is, uh, I think that backhoe, that excavator is so big, when it puts a little down pressure, if you don't have a feel for it, it'll crush that pipe. And that's a pretty strong pipe, and then they drag it up and they suck it into the bell end and so forth. And I think a loss was, a lot was lost in that installation. I did fight with them with numerous times, and I've got it documented in my reports, that the backfill that they were using was not suitable. But it was shale, it wasn't boulders like this that might crack. I don't remember seeing any boulder bigger than maybe a foot or something like that. And sometimes you just leave it in the trench and you just suck it over to the edge where it wouldn't have the down pressure. But, um, but I think it was underneath wasn't as religiously done, as I mentioned.
Do you guys have comments?
And, you know, at a previous meeting, there was also speculation, that's exactly what I want, speculation about potential damage to the sewer lines as well. What can you say about that?
We have seen no evidence.
You know, I don't have to steal his show, and I'll, I'll give it to you. I inspected the sewer lines too. That's a plastic PVC, only about that big, it was bedded in sand below and above, and I have, I have no fear of the, due to, you know, due diligence and inspection, that the sewer lines are fine, but...
Why don't we take one step at a time and...
I was just trying to get that on the table.
Absolutely. What I might suggest, and everybody can modify this, but really, why don't we have our, our engineer and Bob and you, John, together, come up with a couple of areas strategically where you see the biggest structure failures? And go get a couple of, uh, multi-hundred-feet areas, right? Do one at a time, dig it up, and not only inspect the backfill, lift the pipe up, cut it, pull it up, inspect what's underneath, and see if you can come up with any determination in these two sections. And again, I think the biggest part is going to be looking at the area. Can you determine the bigger failures rather than the lesser failures by the video?
Yes.
If you can pick out a couple of areas where the bigger failures are, we concentrate on that, see if we can come up with some idea. It's a, there's a reason why it's failing, it's not just cracking for no reason. And I don't think anybody wants to be punitive with you folks in fixing it, we don't want to disturb the neighbor's way of life either. We just like to, like to fix it. Me, to me, you'd like to fix it, knowing that when it's fixed, it's going to stay fixed. Alright, that's all. So to me, for that, we're going to have to find out why it's failing, so...
I would suggest that we do the second round of video inspections, so that we have something to compare, we have a baseline, and then we can, we can target the ones that seem to have, if there are any areas that have worsened, we can target the worst ones, yep.
You folks have any modifications you want to add to it?
Sounds good to me.
Or, so why don't you coordinate with Mike and Bob, John, and, uh...
I will.
Re-video the areas?
And just so that you understand that there is, there will be some potential litigation with contractors and insurance companies and all that kind of thing. So I, I will need to, I, I agree that we need to do some test pitting and potentially some more cammering.
Well, this will help in your actions against the contractors too.
Absolutely. I, I just want to at least make you aware that we have to notify these people, and it, it may or may not be as quick as we would like it to happen, just so you understand.
Alright, some folks here for the Fox Run?
Still a question.
Microphone, grab a mic.
So Tom Pinchuk and I actually represent the new homeowners association at Fox Run.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is about the sewer lines that you brought up. Those, those lines, do they run parallel or in the vicinity of the drainage lines?
I'm sure they run parallel, but I think they're probably on the other side of the road.
Okay, I, I have a, you know, I just, I have a vested interest, and I heard you, Bob, loud and clear, that those lines look like they're, you know, healthy. However, those lines are our responsibility as a homeowners association. So I, I would, you know, become, I would, you know, my request to the town and to you, John, with Polty is if you're going to be digging up, you know, specific test sections, it would, uh, it would be, you know, useful to us if you can dig up those sewer lines as well, especially if you're going to be seeking litigation from the contractor, and just give those a visual inspection as well.
I think, Mr. Fraschette, I think that we, we never intended to overlook that, because we intend to look at that and the water lines also. But I, I think just to really not let this get out of hand, if we focus on one thing at a time and try to get one cure and then look at the rest, we, we've already talked about ways on how you can test sewer lines to make it work, and we know with the water lines, we can do leak tests and things like that. So I, I think the best bet is to try to focus on the drainage areas and make sure we don't have future sinkholes and rail problems in the area, and see if we can get that under bat, and then we can move on to the sewer lines, because we do know it's the responsibility of the homeowners association to maintain those, so...
Mr. Chairman, if we're going to have another televising done of the drain lines, it might be an opportunity, the equipment is the same, to have them televise the sewer lines at the same time, so...
The sewer line is, etc., if you have some...
Yep. Oh, it is.
If you look at the whole house, there is...
It's a low-pressure force main?
It goes to the...
Okay.
There is a, there is a small section, remember, if you're talking to a couple of hundred foot, right here. With a couple of houses divided, but the majority of the homes have separate home systems.
Okay.
We discussed briefly before, how do you test sewer lines?
Pressure testing.
Pressure. Can this be done with their setup?
I would have to...
Right here.
Yeah. We could do pressure testing on the low-pressure main, just to make sure it'll hold, you know, whatever the static test is for a pressure, for a pressure line. You could do the same thing. You could determine if there's any kind of leak in it. Yeah, you basically, you could do that for the gravity sewer. Seal each end, do a low air pressure test, and...
But that's a different set of equipment to do that type?
Yes. Pressure testing equipment is not...
All right. So why don't we just stick on the drainage then for now, and see if we can find out what's wrong there, and then move on to the sewer and work on that next?
Except the TV.
If the TV's going to be out there, they could televise at least the gravity sewer.
Okay.
And even if it's only 100 feet, it might give you an indication. If it was consistent workmanship throughout the job, you might see some indications of settlement or dips or anything that's going to do.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Chairman.
Cook. I'm a homeowner, 190 Warren. So my concern would be, one year ago, the cracks were discovered, and, you know, I know that Pulte came up with the original assessment of, maybe in December, they presented that to the board. The board refused it with the fusing of the pipes. There was no conversation for three or four months, and here we are, and now Pulte is basically saying it's going to take a long time to have this done again, have them look into it. It seems like Pulte's delaying quite a bit. So you're holding a bond. I believe you have another bond that you could, you could get access to more money. I don't want this to be the same situation we just heard from the previous group, where this goes on for four years. A non-productive, non-productive type meetings. So...
From what has happened in the last couple of weeks, Mr. Cook, it looks like that they're moving at a decent speed to try to get this fixed.
Well, he just said, I don't expect this to happen too quickly.
You mean as far as the work being done?
In general, I didn't get the sense of urgency that they're going to, you know, dig up the road quickly, inspect things.
What I heard was that they're intending to go into litigation with the people who install these pipelines, and that, and that in order to have this work that's being done, this inspection, serve not only the purpose of determining what's wrong, but also provide data for that litigation suit, that's going to take a little time to arrange the representation from the... Yeah, from, from the people who put it in originally, so they can witness it as well. Did I understand that correctly?
No, that's correct, Walter. But a little bit of time, that's a very big, you know, a little bit of time could be four months, it could be six months, it could be a month, it could be a year.
Yeah. I just want to say, this is a huge development, and every time that we've brought the developer in, I think that they've been very responsive to our concerns. It's a completely different animal than what you just had to view prior to this. Unfortunately, that has been a broken record with a very consistent kind of behavior. This, every time we've found problems, they've partnered with us, they've stepped up to the plate, they've responded and repaired. I think what we're saying is there may be a legal aspect of this which could slow things down a bit, but I'm, I'm not sensing that they're not going to move forward with it.
With all due respect, Michelle, I just would say, this, this issue was discovered a year ago. So I don't think things are moving along that quickly, because here we are, just talking about steps that maybe should have been, you know, I would have thought this timeline would have been, you know...
Well, let's see how it goes from here. We brought our engineer in. We do have a little bit of consensus that what they're talking about may in fact work and not affect the drainage. So let's see if we can get these videoed in the near future, okay?
And honestly, there's, and I don't mean to, just to sound disrespectful, but there's some benefit in this particular problem in letting a little bit of time go, because we want to make sure that we're not fixing a micro symptom and not the macro problem that's causing it, right? And, and one of the things is, is if we're going to start to see failure become more pervasive, time is going to help us decide if this is a bigger problem or not. And I'm not saying delay for intentional reasons, but this is one that actually a little bit of delay, I think, will help us come up with a better solution, if that makes any sense.
But I really think we need to put a timeline.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Could I add something to the discussion?
At any given point, if you can say well, the litigation, we're trying to sue the other subcontractors, and that could go on for a year.
What's the, what's the best estimate of the timeline? David Evans, also a homeowner. So I was just wanting to follow up. What's the best estimate of the experts in the room of the timeline that we'd expect to see for resolution?
Well, that's a couple of questions. So when can we do the videotaping?
Again, I would have to talk to our...
Yeah, why?
And we, we would probably have many things to do.
Why don't you do this? Why don't you...
We would probably have, I'm sorry.
All right. Why don't you report back to the planning board office on when you think you can do the re-videoing of the lines, all right?
Yes.
And also, assuming that that can be done in a timely fashion, when we can pick out a couple of spots to dig up and go to it, okay?
I will look at that tomorrow.
Let's get a timeline, where we can get the video and all the testing done. See if we can come up with a reason for the failures, okay? Why don't you get back to Betsy, why don't you check with your counsel, and see if we can put a timeframe in this and move forward, and at least try to find the problem.
Absolutely.
Does that work for you guys?
One more quick observation I'd like to offer to the gentleman. Pulte has a vested interest in acting, John, I'm going to speak a little bit for Pulte here, but I think you'll agree. Pulte has a vested interest in being expedient about this, because if there is a continuing deterioration, the cost to correct it is only going to escalate. If we catch it now, and if we respond to it now appropriately, through some method of trenchless repair, they don't have to go in and actually dig up and replace pipes to a, to a much greater cost. So I think built into this issue for Pulte Homes is a desire to resolve this quickly, so that if there is a less invasive and less costly method of rehabilitating these pipes and correcting the deficiencies, it only serves their interests financially, not just goodwill or, it's, it's a financial interest built into this question.
All right. Let's get it... That may be true, that they have a vested, but they're not acting in an expedition.
Let's not argue the point. Let's, let's move forward and see how they do. All right. So why don't you, why don't you get back to us with a timeline of when you can test, when you guys can meet to review the videos, and when you can have a machine out there after you decide where you're going to be digging, okay?
Fair enough.
And I think before you decide where you're going to be digging, you probably should put it in writing to Betsy, so the planning board can get just a, just a short summary of what you found in the videos, right? Which sections you're going to be digging up, how long they are, and why did you choose these sections, okay? You could sort of summarize that, so we all know what's going on. That would be good.
If I could make a request as well, if I could get some contact information, I would, I would like our engineer and, and yourself to have some conversations, so that...
Sure.
That everybody's kind of on the same page.
Just as a follow-up, just a thank you, Mr. Chairman, for putting a timeline on the next step. But I'm just kind of curious, and just to set our expectations, typically, what are we looking at here for final resolution? Is it six months, 12 months?
It's really hard to say, sir, until we know what the problem is. Until we find out why they're failing, it really is tough to say.
Worst case, if we had to dig up, as the gentleman suggested, dig up a trench and relay the pipe?
That should tell us, hopefully, what's...
If it was worst case, still worst case, what, is it a year?
Right. I really can't say.
I can't say.
I'd like to, but I can't.
Okay.
All right. So why don't you guys work on that, let us know, and maybe we can get this testing done, and find out what's happening there. And like Mike said, if it's happening and we can fix it soon, then all the better, right?
If we can find an appropriate method that's going to be for the long term, yes.
All right. Let's see what happens. And you guys are welcome to check in with us, the neighbors, anytime you want, okay, to find out the status.
Yeah, sure, we will.
Very good. I don't blame you. All right. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Betsy's your contact.
She's so angry.
Yeah. Well, what are you going to do?
We're going to raise...
It's around. He always got his phone in his hand. I figured.
Put a cellphone up on the website.
I have a spot for you.
You do? Give me one of those @norfolk.gov email addresses.
Who is our new clerk?
That'd be me.
Ah. Did you have a chance to look at the minutes for May 16?
John?
I didn't get a chance to go through them entirely.
As a former clerk, I read them this afternoon.
You're such a pull-through, all the time, Walter. You're so great.
Mike Savali wasn't there, so I just have to cross him out.
Creature of habit.
We all set with the... All right. Motion approved the minutes of May 16th is amended. So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So you all be with that one?
There we go. Yeah, they're on the board.
Who, who would like to fill the illustrious spot of CPC rep? Would anybody like?
Christless.
Rock, paper, scissors?
This is going to be by my initiation, the new member.
Yeah, you are technically the newest member.
The new guy.
I got to skip secretary, so I guess...
You sure did.
So, yeah, I will move to nominate our colleague Greg here.
You needed to look at my name tag.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't say it wrong, because the last time I...
Second.
Third?
All in favor?
Aye.
Me.
Gee, thanks. Oh, CC.
Everybody all set for the next meeting, July 11?
Your wife's going to be so proud of you, Greg.
She's going to be so mad at me.
Yep.
You guys take a look at the...
Do these people, do they have meetings?
Yes.
How many?
Five or six a month, that's it.
They don't go very long.
They're usually like, they're around till about 11.
So, did you guys look at the applications for people that submitted them, what, a year ago?
Oh, yeah.
They're a year ago?
They're a year ago.
I didn't realize.
Did they miss the election?
They didn't come to us.
Oh, where did they go?
They went to the administrator's office.
Oh, to Jack's office?
I think so.
Well, it's hard, it's hard to tell, you know, from, from the letters. You need to talk to these people.
December 1, 2016.
Yeah, I'd say of the two, one at least has had some, you know, some public service experience.
I have not reached out to anybody to see if they're still interested. Is, do we want to advertise that we're looking?
Right. Why don't, why don't you tell Jack to get on NCTV, the community page, Rick, wherever else people go to look to see if anybody's interested in being appointed. And at the same time, if these people are still interested, I'm sure you'll hear from them.
I don't recognize any of these names.
Things kind of changed in the last year for them, so...
They may not even still live here.
That happens.
Michael Proppich and Edward Haddad.
Do you have anything for us to sign, Betsy?
Yes.
These, these date, December, huh?
Yeah. Received December, six months old. It's interesting that they're both received in December.
I know. Isn't that weird? Within like a week of each other.
It must have put something up there.
Stop and chop agreement.
It's filing, it's bigger and bigger every day.
Is there an order?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Community Preservation Committee.
Is that what it stands for? I don't even know.
I think so.
You have anything for us, Frank? Betsy?
I have a memo that I forwarded to the town administrator that just wanted to...
Okay.
I don't necessarily need to go through it, but it's just a laundry list of different projects and things that I've been working on. Hopefully, this laundry list will help the next planner kind of get up to speed and figure out what they need to do.
Okay.
I don't know what you've been spending all your time doing, you know, it's like...
I don't know either.
It's only eight pages, right?
It's only like, I know.
I'm not that good at this, apparently. I should have had all this done.
It's an impressive list. It's a lot, lot going on.
So what did you do?
I don't know. Really not sure anymore.
So we, we think that Gino is going to be able to write the decisions?
Yes. I had a conversation with Gino Calucci, who was our consultant in the past. He has, there's something in the genes with the, in the Calucci family. His wife is a planner, his son is an attorney who also focuses in on land use planning. So between the three of them, he said that they will be able to write decisions and help the planning board out in the interim before we end up hiring a planner.
Betsy knows how to get ahold of him, so we can find out what he needs from us to write the decisions, right?
Yeah. The big hangup with Gino is that he works for Milis and...
Sherborn?
Sherborn, thank you. And their meetings are Monday, Tuesday nights. They alternate. So he's out just about every Tuesday night. So he can't come to the meetings, but he may be able to get his son to come, he might be able to get his wife to come, if that's necessary. But definitely will be able to write decisions, and that kind of work done for the planning board.
One thing you did duck was redoing the master plan.
Did what?
You did duck while you were here.
Yes.
Good job.
Proudly.
But I, you know, there's segments that are being worked on. The housing production plan is part of the master plan. The economic development study is also part of the master plan. And, you know...
I'm going to roast you a little bit, Ray. You don't get off that easy.
I know, but there was strategy to it. It wasn't like I was just...
You're leaving us high and dry, jeepers, you know? You get a little bit of roasting for that.
I did give them one.
That was very generous.
Typical, in your position, is more like a year notice. I think it would have been much more appreciated, you know?
That wasn't in my contract.
Right? Isn't that standard industry?
That's right. That wasn't a contract.
A year.
I'm sorry. You know, I leave this job with a heavy heart, because I really enjoyed working with this planning board. I enjoyed the folks that worked here at the town.
And you were doing a lot of good work. Honestly, I take all my kidding aside, this is a tremendous workload, and really, all good, good stuff, important stuff, and I don't know how we're going to do it without you, so...
You might find someone better, or maybe just as good.
Well, you certainly demonstrated the need for the, for the position.
That's for sure.
That's for sure.
Yeah. It's almost like, how did we live so long without it, right?
Yeah, I mean, it was, it's definitely necessary. That work just shows all the things that you did.
Yeah, it was a step up for the town to fill that position.
And I have to say, my administrative staff has just made my life so much easier. Betsy, you know, is the Johnny on the spot, so to speak. Whenever I need something, don't remember something, you know, need to refresh her on whatever's going on, Betsy's been right there to really pick me up and point me in the right direction and say, go.
Chelsea knows which box to look in for the, for the...
Worse than that, she knows...
...we had filed seven years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. She knows exactly where everything is in the office. It's sort of a radar O'Reilly situation going on, where if you think of something, she says, here it is.
Boy, you're hitting yourself with that.
I know. Missed those shows.
It was a great show.
It was a great show. Your other business?
No, sir.
Motion two adjourned?
Second. Oh, someone made them. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All set? You can let...